Call meeting's order, please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. I swear in the new mayor and trustees.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat these words after me. I, John J. LaBounty.
I, John J. LaBounty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New York State.
And the Constitution of New York State.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
According to the best of my abilities.
And according to the best of my abilities.
I, Brian S. Pelkey.
I, Brian S. Pelkey.
I, Benjamin J. Arnold.
I, Benjamin J. Arnold.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
The Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As village trustee.
As village trustee.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to my best of abilities.
First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. And Mr. Latchmore, the administrator, will take a little call. Attendants, please.
Trustee Pelkey. Trustee Menard.
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez. And trustee Arnold.
Aye.
At this point, we will now open up the meeting for a public hearing on the Ross's Point tentative budget for the year 2022, 2023. Everybody's had an opportunity to go on our website and check out the budget. Everybody's had up until 7:00 PM tonight to request a copy of said budget. Anyone that would have any questions here tonight or any comments on the tentative budget. So far, so good. Now, we're going to ask at the minutes of the last meeting, is there any changes or questions on the minutes of the last meeting? Does any of the trustees have anything to add or subtract?
We have public.
Excuse me?
You need to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. The public hearing for the budget is now closed. That's going to be coming up next. Back to the public or the we have, we're going to open up the regular session of our open meeting to the public. Excuse me?
If you want to second these.
Oh, we haven't had that, okay, I apologize. We're going to go back to the minutes of the regular meeting from the March 21st. Is there any changes, questions, anything?
I make a motion, do you accept it as printed? Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to open up the meeting to the public. I have some guidelines for the public to adhere to when they're addressing the board. Individuals wishing to speak during the public comment period must sign in. Speakers must be recognized by the mayor. Speakers must step to the front of the room. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization, if any they belong to. Speakers must limit their remarks to five minutes. Speakers may not yield any remaining time to another speaker. Board members may, with permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during the remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification of any information. All remarks must be addressed to the board as a body, not to the individual board members. And speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may also address the board by written communication. And I want to clarify something. When somebody stands up to address this board, nobody else has that opportunity to interrupt them. They, you only address this board. You don't address the person speaking. You don't interrupt the person speaking. We're going to practice good courtesy here, and everybody's going to get an opportunity to speak. Any questions on those rules? Now, we'll open it up to the public. The first name on the list is William Phelps. It looks like he is from 91 Champlain Street.
Am I recognized?
You are recognized, Mr. Phelps.
I'm new to Ross's Point. Moved in last February. And I'm mostly concerned with the increase in my electric bill from March, from the previous bill in February, and from the previous March. I've owned the house since December 28th of 2020. Now, there's a lot of rumors going around. And realistically, I'm not here to cast any aspersions, make any statements, because I really have no knowledge of my own. But I would like clarified. And I have a number of questions that maybe you guys can clarify. And starting with, are there any contracts signed by the village of Ross's Point and either ERS properties or real estate? Or their tenants?
To my, to my knowledge, and I'll ask the administrator, there has been no contract signed of any type between the ERS people and any tenant within the building?
There are no, there are no signed contracts between the village or any of the tenants or the property owner.
Okay, so, in other words, a previous mayor, Mr. Phelps, did not sign any contracts on behalf of the village with either ERS properties or 2CRSI or RPNY or anything like that?
Not that we're aware of.
No.
Okay. Do we know the facts of the property? Who are the tenants? Can we even know who the tenants are?
There's a lot of questions, Mr. Phelps. And I'm not at liberty right now because of all the legal angles that may come into play. All I can tell you is that I intend to sit down with a representative from ERS along with the administrator, Mr. Latchmore, to see if we can find out much information about the property owners or the managers and what type of tenants they have in that property and what their intentions are. And we will go from there. As of this point, I have very limited or very, or null information. We, as a board, I don't believe unless somebody, Mr. Trustee Arnold, Trustee Pelkey, or Trustee Menard, can add anything to what I just told you. We have not personally been in the building. I don't believe the administrator or anyone has been in the building. We have had some conversations about possibly getting into the building in the future. And that's what, one of the conversations I plan to have with an ERS representative. But right now, to answer your questions, no, we do not know exactly what's in that building.
We do know some of the tenants, but
Yeah, I mean.
CRSI. But other than that.
We know some of the tenants, but we, right now, we don't know. We haven't had the privilege to go into the building, or the code officer hasn't had the privilege to go into the building, or the fire marshal or anyone else. So, we can't really tell you other than the fact that they filled out one permit, I believe, Mr. Latchmore?
Actually, there are two permits.
Two permits.
There was one for 2CSRI, which was the manufacturing of computers. And then we had one for what's the other one?
The office.
The offices. And the other one is for offices.
Which are located in the village. And that's for 2CRSI. They're not located on Maple Street, is that correct?
That's correct. As far as I know, those are the only applications or permits.
There is no building permit for the actual site, in other words.
There was an office mandate issued, and there was one for the testing in there issued last year.
For the testing?
Well, they, they made an office up and the, the Canadian gentleman came here and presented to the board what he was doing in there and the, setting up these computers for testing and things. He met with the board and everything. And that was part of the office deal. They were supposed to have, well, the office is, he says, really huge. It must be 60 feet long and maybe 30 or 40 feet wide. And it was all set up for offices. And when I was in there and inspected it. I, with the last.
You know, I'm not saying anything about it, I just wanted to find out.
I think we pretty much answered what you, you were asking.
Do we know if anything about what the tenants are doing? We don't even know who the tenants are. Why are they mining Bitcoin?
We have, like I said, we, we have limited information. You know, it's, it's what we've been told. And, and we have to accept at this point. I mean, other, other than that, like I said, I, I intend to sit down and see if I can have a, a meeting with this individual or individual along with the supervisor or the administrator, rather, and then see if we can get more information. And then if I, if I find out more information, I will share that with the public as soon as I have it.
Of course.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Mr. Trustee Menard would like to add something.
From, from all the previous meetings, they have said that they are not mining Bitcoin, but they do have a data processing center.
Correct, yeah. I mean, their own literature, I've printed out articles from both, from themselves, from 2CRSI, also from, it's called Data Center Dynamics.com, which is a trade organization for data processing companies. Basically, data processing, doesn't matter if it's for Bitcoin mining or for gaming or whatever, 2CRSI maintains that they are doing gaming data processing for that industry in their own literature. But it's high energy usage and gives off a lot of heat as a result. You would know because you were currently in charge of the electrical division or department here for years. Could I address to you specifically for?
You're getting close to your five minutes.
Okay, well, I, I will sit down, but realistically, you have it in hand. You will report back once you get.
As soon, as soon as the meeting that I intend to have with the representative from ERS and myself and the administrator is set and we have some quality information, I will share it at the first opportunity at a board meeting to let everybody know what I know. There will be, there will be, there will be no secrets as soon as I find out what's up there. Everybody will know.
Perfect. I couldn't ask for more.
And that's what I, that's what I intend to do.
Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. My first meeting is coming. I'll be in a few days, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
You're welcome, thank you.
The only other speaker we have for this evening would be Ms. Marlene Beal. Could you step forward?
Marlene Beal, Tuesday, August 21st. Congratulations, by the way, to you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
The last meeting, the mayor passed the buck to you. So, I, and the, the extra nuclear charge has been going on forever. And the excessive, my electric bill was $75 and he charged 150 that I have to hand to some man running his business. And that's unfair and I really want my money back. And not only for last, not the last month, but whatever comes this month. And I've got a whole list of the previous. And I sign my checks. Paid under protest. So that if ever the money gets back, we, it should be returned. At this point, you, he gave you the, so it's a few. You have to have a meeting and you have to petition the PSC for, to, to charge the extra power that is needed after hydro. Because the hydro was bought for the residents of the village. And that nuclear charge should be charged to the businesses proportionally. And then if there's any hydro, then they can get the cheaper. But they're working it all wrong for 20, 30 years, Arson?
Probably.
But that's my, my.
No, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Beal. I, I, I heard what you said the last meeting prior to. This will be my first day in office. I will check in and see what I can find out for information. And if there's anything that I can give to you and be helpful, I will supply that to you.
Yeah. I think that the petition will test, go first. All right, thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have for people wishing to address the board from the public. Right now, we're going to go to the bills. Mr. Letourneau, do we have any bills?
There are no additions or deletions tonight.
I make a motion, the bill be paid.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents, Mr. Latchmore?
So, we do have two correspondence. The first thing that I'd like to address is that I received an email from Mike Duffy. The email indicated I'm ready to inform the board that I'm going to resign from the zoning board of appeals. I apologize if I thought I would have the time to learn and proceed as an alternate and then a full-time member, and that is not the case. I'd rather resign than to give less than 100%. I applaud all the board members for volunteering your time and service to the village of Ross's Point.
Do I have a motion on the floor to accept Mr. Duffy's resignation from the zoning board?
I make a motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez is absent, and trustee Arnold.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. Since we received this resignation, I have decided to appoint Mr. Patrick Canning for the remaining one year for this term. That is a mayor appointment that I don't need a board approval on. So, Mr. Patrick Canning will be filling that position on the zoning board. Any other correspondents?
I do have one, I do have one other correspondence. It's from the American Legion Ozziller Unit 912. The American Legion Ozziller Unit 912 of Ross's Point is requesting the village of Ross's Point grant its permission to distribute popsies for donations. As we continue to endure COVID-19, we'll be currently abid by the federal, state, and local officials' guidelines and set up the distribution to include masks if necessary. If permitted, we would like to make these popsies available at various times, locations throughout the village during the periods of May through possibly November to capture the Patriotic, Patriotic holidays, Memorial Day, Flag Day, both of July and Veterans Day. Therefore, with your permission, would be greatly appreciated. It says, "Thank you for your support concerning these matters."
Thank you.
Make a motion, we accept, allow the ability to sell the copies?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, I'm going to do the appointments as follows. Deputy mayor for a term of one year will be Dale Menard. Deputy treasurer for a period of one year will be Rebecca Pelkey. Attorney for the village, legal services for one year will be Thomas M. Renee. Budget officer for a term of one year will be Mr. Arson Letourneau. The IEEP officer will be the mayor, John LaBounty, for a term of one year. The youth commissioner will be Janice D. Letourneau for a term of one year. The library board trustees will be Mary, Mary O'Connor for a term of five years. The zoning board of appeals, remember, I'm replacing Karen Thorne with Charmin Burts for a period of two years. I'm also appointing to the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Michael Mumry for a period of two years as an alternate. And then also for the zoning board of appeals, another alternate will be, for a term of two years, will be Matthew Favreau.
Mayor LaBounty?
Excuse me?
Mike Mumley. It shouldn't be alternate, it should be a, a member, a full member.
Okay, I see it's alternate, he will be a member. Thank you. So, stand corrected for the record. Mr. Mumley will be a member, not an alternate. And he will be appointed by myself for a period of two years. The banking institution that the village will use will be TD Bank and Champlain National Bank, which is an annual appointment for that. The official newspaper for the village will be the Press Republican. I need a motion on the floor to accept the mayor or appointments. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All those, well, let's, let's do a, we'll call vote, Mr. Administrator.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. Now, we're going to put the committee appointments by the mayor. On the water and sewer committee will be, chairperson will be Mr. Brian Pelkey. Co-chair will be trustee Arnold. Electrical department will be trustee Arnold as the chairperson. Co-chair will be trustee Menard. Community development, planning, and zoning codes. Trustee Menard will be the chairperson. Trustee Rodriguez will be the co-chairperson. Fire and EMT services will be trustee, Mr. Arnold will be the chairperson. Mr. Brian Pelkey trustee will be the co-chairperson. Library historic, Welcome Center. Trustee Dale Menard will be the chairperson. Trustee Benjamin R. will be the co-chairperson. Public clerks department. Trustee Joseph Rodriguez will be the chairperson. Co-chairperson will be trustee Brian Pelkey. Personnel and insurance will be chaired by Mr. Trustee Pelkey. Co-chair will be trustee Rodriguez. Lastly, the parks and recreation civic center and youth organizations will be chaired by trustee Rodriguez and co-chaired by trustee Menard. Now, we're going to go into the scheduling our regular meetings for the, for the year 2022, 2023, the board meetings. All board meetings will be held at Halsted Hall located at the Civic Center at 39 Lake Street, Ross's Point, New York, on the first and third Mondays, and will begin promptly at 7:00 PM. Unless otherwise noted, all meetings will be open to the public. Do I have a motion to accept the board minutes or the board schedule for the 2022, 2023 season?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, I have a resolution for the village of Ross's Point budget adoption, resolution 2022-11. Resolution adopting a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1st, 2022 and ending May 31st, 2023, making appropriations for the conduct of the village government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Whereas the board of trustees has met at the time and place specific in the notice of public hearing in a tentative budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard. Therefore, be resolved that the tentative budget as herein, hereafter, set forth, hereby adopted, several amounts stated in the column entitled Final Budget Adopted in Schedule A1 through Schedule AEE together with the amount set forth in a budget summary by fund found on page 2 are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified. The salaries, wages stated in Schedule 6, pages 39 and 40 are effective June 1st, 2022 for all employees. The union employees' salaries and wages are negotiated through a signed labor contract with the Civil Service Employees Association Incorporated. Mr. Administrator, would you take a vote on approving the tentative budget adoption resolution 2022-11?
I'm going to need a motion on that first.
I'll make a motion. Resolution 2022-11 in form of a motion?
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. So, so approved. We have on the next approval of the village of Ross's Point water rate resolution for 2022-12. We have the industrial rate is to be determined. The metered rate is $50.75 plus 55, 55 cents per thousand gallons consumed. The flat rate would be $50.75 a month. And the outside rate for outside the village residents, double the above rates. Do I have a motion to accept those rates?
I make a motion to accept the rate as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass. Okay, we have.
Do you need to do a roll call?
Want to do a roll call? Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. Now, we're going to go to the village of Ross's Point mileage reimbursement, resolution 2022-13. Whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point, New York, has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their personal vehicles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Therefore, be it resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point shall approve reimbursements to such officer and employees at the rate of 58 and a half cents per mile in accordance with the 2022 IRS standard mileage rates for business. The resolution shall take effect immediately. The question of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a roll, on a roll call, which resulted as follows. I need a motion to approve the mileage reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve the mileage resolution?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Administrator, could you call roll call vote?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. Said motion passes.
You don't have sewer rate.
No, at this point in time, it needs to be set up for a public hearing.
We, uh, public hearing to amend sewer rate, I don't see that in my package.
Just need a motion.
You just need, you just need to set it up for a public hearing.
Oh, we just need to set up for a public hearing, okay. Do I, we need to set up a public hearing to amend the sewer rate for the 2022 year, 2023 year? Do I have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion that we have a public hearing at our next meeting. I make a motion that we have a public hearing at our next meeting?
Which would be April eighteenth, 2022.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, on the eighteenth of April, 2022, we'll have a public hearing for the sewer rate for the, for the next year. And lastly, review village policies as follows. The policies are hazard communication, communication program, fund balance policy, workplace violence policy and incident reporting, family and medical leave of absence policy, vehicle use policy, internet and acceptable use policy, use of the village property policy, conflict of interest policy, sexual harassment policy, alcohol, marijuana, and drug use policy, investment policy, travel policy, sick leave donation policy, non-bargaining unit employees, rules, procedures for Board of Trustees and public meetings, confined space entry procedure, policy against discrimination and harassment, sale of surplus materials policy, and lastly, electronic sign message board usage policy. It's my understanding that the administrator has given each board member a copy of these policies. Is that correct, Trustee Pelkey, Trustee Menard, and Trustee Arnold?
Yes.
Do we have any, any questions or discussions on these policies? If not, then I would take, I'd like a motion to accept the policies.
I'll put that in the form of a motion to accept the policies of Village of Ross's Point?
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote? Trustee, or, Mr. Administrator?
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty?
Aye. Okay, now, we're going to turn it over to Trustee Arnold. Do you have anything to report?
Uh, the only thing I got is the rec. Senator Deice has gone out of the skating rink. They done it last Wednesday, and you're cleaning up the Rouse Park today. That's the only thing I have.
Thank you. Trustee Menard?
A couple of things, just on Trustee Arnold. I'd just like to thank the Civic Center crew. They did a great job this year maintaining the ice and holding all the tournaments and all the ice skaters. I'd just like to thank each one of them for their hard work over the winter. And I'd also like to report that our dog park is coming along fairly well. Adam has informed me that it'll be another few weeks before we're done. We just need to put in some gates and some benches, and we should be, we should have a dog park within the next month or so. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, I want to thank the residents for the support of the elections to give me another, another term to serve. Looking forward to working with our new mayor. I had a meeting with the wastewater personnel and the water plant personnel, because those are my committees. Daily operations are normal. They're doing regular maintenance. So everything's going well in the water and the wastewater plant. I'm happy to, to announce or to at least bring it forward that with the COVID restrictions lifted, our neighbors to the north are allowed to come down to our village. And just last weekend, I seen a big difference with the population of the Canadian plates, and the boatyards seem to be starting to buzz. So hopefully, we'll be back, back to normal this summer. So, it's nice to see them back in our village spending their money. It helps all our businesses and all around.
Thank you. Mr. Kober, do you have anything for the code officers to report?
No, sir, I turned in my quarterly reports, I had one this morning, and they've all had read it. If there's any questions, if there's any questions, swing by my office, and I'll answer whatever questions you guys have, if there's anything you need.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anybody in the public who'd like to address the board? Again, five minutes? Signed up? No? Okay. I, I, my understanding is the administrator's contract has not been signed by a previous mayor, and it was approved by this board. I would like a motion to give me the authority to sign Mr. Latchmore's contract as the new mayor.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with our administrator, which should have been done.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote? Mr. Administrator?
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty?
Aye.
I have one question on this. Is it going to be dated from this day forward to the next year?
That would be a legal question, Mr. Mernane. I would think that I would only have the authority to set from the time I sign it forward.
I would say that's probably correct, but we can take a look at it. I think it's just effective as if they say it's been signed.
I, I do not believe that anybody has made any, give me anything or give the administrator anything to go into executive session, anything personnel problems or anything that I need to talk about. Mr. Latchmore, anything I should be aware of?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did I have a...
I got one other thing. The coffee shop, Lakeside Coffee is having a kids' program for Easter, April ninth.
Okay.
They're going to have a thing outside and some different means, I guess, or whatever.
Okay. And I, once again, like to thank everybody for showing up. I want you to all be aware that I have an open door policy. You call my office, I will be there. I will sit down with anyone who wants to talk about any of the village's problems. The administrator is doing a wonderful job. He's there forty hours a week. So if there's any questions you have about anything going on in the village, he would be the first person you contact, and I would be in any type of meeting or setting of a meeting that would be, be necessary to further answer anybody's concerns. But I want this, people to be assured that we are going to have an open door policy, and everybody's going to know what's going on in this village. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.